Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta.
Present.
Mr. Bolonino.
Present.
Ms. Diadetta.
Present.
Mr. Barry.
Present.
Mr. Diombre.
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Present.
Ms. Howard.
Present.
Mr. Lewis.
Present.
I'd like to once again welcome everyone here this evening. Anyone interested in speaking this evening is requested to do so respectfully and in accordance with our policy for public comment. We have supplied copies of this policy for reference, which can be found by the sign-in sheet. Also, if anyone is interested in speaking this evening, they must sign in at the sheet over on the side. We are asking that each speaker keep their questions and/or comments to three minutes. All questions will be responded to by Dr. Alfonso. He will do his best to answer each one, however, if there are questions that require research or consultation with the administration, he will respond to those questions by way of a post on our sboe.org website. Information will be sent to the public on how to view Dr. Alfonso's responses once they are available. Before I turn the meeting over to Dr. Alfonso, I have some initial comments to share with you. The board wants to emphasize that the issue of redistricting has dated back ten years. This is not a new topic of discussion. We have consulted with previous board members and were advised that multiple factors were the reasons why a comprehensive plan was not moved forward on. The reasons included the changes in the district leadership and, of course, the impact of the coronavirus on our district's priorities. This current board included this as priority in hiring Dr. Alfonso and expressed to him the importance of this initiative. We have full confidence that Dr. Alfonso will successfully move this initiative forward for the benefit of our students and families. Research was done prior to beginning the process. Some of the top-performing districts in the state of New Jersey use this model, and research supports its effectiveness in making them leading educational institutions in the state. Dr. Alfonso will highlight these districts during his presentation. Our number-one goal is doing -- I'm sorry. Our number-one goal is doing what is best for our students' educational success. The most successful approach to ensuring equity, continuing the education program and alignment of the curriculum is to house all grades in one building. I ask that you be receptive to what Dr. Alfonso has to say this evening. We know that change is not easy for any of us and that some families will have to change the routine to which they have become accustomed. However, we feel that once these obstacles are overcome, we will continue to distinguish our district as a lighthouse district committed to educational excellence. Thank you, and now, Dr. Alfonso.
Thank you, Ms. Diadetta. Good evening, all. Thank you all for coming out. It is an amazing turnout. We're very excited to present to you what we have today. So just to review a little bit what we're going to be going over with this presentation, we're going to talk about the benefits of our redistricting initiative, some districts that are comparisons that have done the redistricting as well, what we have done up to this point, what we're looking to do next, our next steps, some common questions that we heard through the community, and lastly, a Q and A. We're going to open up the floor to all of you with any of you that have signed up for the questions. So as Ms. Diadetta previously mentioned, this is not a morning-after type of thought. This is something that was approached to me when I first interviewed in Seacaucus, and from my understanding, it's been about ten years in the process, and due to many, you know, constraints, has not been seen to fruition. So that is something that I sought to do a little more research, have some communication with some stakeholders, and hopefully see it through to the end. So some of the benefits. Here are some of the bullet points we're going to talk about. The focus curriculum and instruction. Specializing in narrow age ranges allows our educators to develop a more targeted and effective teaching strategies. Teachers can focus on more specialized developmental strategies appropriate for our grade levels. The sole purpose of this initiative, which I want to stress to you all, is the educational component, the benefits of education. That is the driving force behind this initiative. Second is our resource optimization. By concentrating resources like specialized teachers, learning materials specific to each grade band, we can enhance the quality of education. Our special teachers are going to be focusing on a smaller grade band, have a more targeted approach to that. This also includes more tailored professional development for our staff. Those of you that are educators here, some of you have voiced your concerns as educators, we all know that the larger the school, the more that the professional development might not directly align to our needs as educators. By having a more concise grade band, the professional development is going to be more targeted to our needs and the needs of our students. Enhance social and emotional development. This realignment promotes a more nurturing environment for students. Younger children catered to can learn in a space tailored to their emotional and social needs, while older students in grade three to five can grow in an environment that prepares them for transition to middle school. For those of us here who have seen what a middle school looks like, I was -- I've done the whole K-12 spectrum. I was a middle school principal for a while. It is terrifying to see our students when they first come into middle school, the first days. It's such a large transition. And by having these grade-band schools set up, we can minimize that fear factor for them by allowing a smooth transition and progress in their independence. We could have teams. By having these teams set up within the three to five school, our students could be transitioning from class to class in a much smaller concentrated setting to start producing that independence and then really minimize that learning gap when they get to middle school. There is nothing more heartbreaking than to see our students in middle school now know how to get to a class, running, shuffling with books, all these little things that we might take for granted that it was so long ago for a lot of us. I could personally tell you from experiences, there was meltdowns in the middle of the hallway. You know, a lot of students didn't even bother using a locker. You know, a lot of students didn't even bother using a locker because they didn't even know how to open the locker. These are the little things that sometimes we forget because it's been so many years since we were in that setting and we felt that transition. By having this three-to-five setting, we're allowing a small gradual increase in their independence and their learning environment. Community and continuity. Students will benefit from continuity in their early schooling years. They'll be able to form stronger, longer-lasting relationships with their peers, teachers, and fostering a sense of community belonging. From my previous districts, yes, you know, depending on the district you were in, when you had two different neighborhood schools, over here, the bees and the bears, there's a little bit of that, you know, are you a bee or you a bear? What was your upbringing? Who was a better school? What's a better mascot? Ultimately, where do we all meet? At the middle school and the high school. At the end of the day, we are all patriots. So by doing these grade-band schools, we're establishing that rapport and that community-building relationship within our students at a much earlier age. Every student will be a bee, every student will be a bear. It's a much gradual, united approach towards that. Equitable access and opportunities. This model allows for more equitable distribution of resources and opportunities across the district, ensuring that all students, regardless of their background, have access to high-quality education support. You know, something that we're looking to do at a K-2 level is Orin-Gillingham training. Those of you that are familiar with Orin-Gillingham training, it is a fantastic training to develop phonemic awareness and reading comprehension skills for our students. By having a tailored approach, just as Orin-Gillingham, our entire K-2 school would be, which would be Claritin, could single-handedly get that instruction, while we could focus on different types of resources and materials for our Hubert Street families and teachers. So there, again, direct PDs, direct approach, direct instruction, tailored to the needs of our students. And they develop at a more appropriate rate. We always talk about, you know, in the middle school, some of our younger kids, some are older kids, sixth grade to 12th grade, oh, it's a big jump. If we stop and think about it, K-5 is the same thing. It is six years. So we are very worried about our sixth-grade students sometimes, what they might be hearing in the hallways, the exposure they might be getting. Our kindergarten babies, it's the same thing. So that's something we also need to take into account. We see larger students, larger problems, but it's also exposure to language, exposure to some of the things they watch on TV, some of the conversations they might be having. By having our grade-band schools is going to eliminate a lot of that. So let me see how it looks on the screen. It's really small, I could share with all of you, but I'm just going to give you, wow, it's a lot smaller than I thought. So let me read off to you some of them. So some of these district comparisons. Some school districts like Demerous, East Rutherford, Englewood Cliffs, Fairview, Little Falls, Mawa, just on the screen, we'll have a second screen. These are all districts that are grade-band schools. And we have over 2,000 districts. We have approximately 2,700 elementary schools in New Jersey. If you're looking at their rankings, we have 95, 33, 434, 104, 221. I'm just reading out some of these numbers. You start hearing some of these numbers, I'm going to get to the point of it at the end. Up next, we have Midland Park, Ramsey, Rutherford, Summit, Weehawken, right next door to us, 186, 187, 196, 243, 375, 204, number one, number 32, number 52, number 399, Weehawken, next door. And to give you a relative comparison, we were ranked 465 and 412. So we were like, oh, 200, 200, 200? Again, it's not too bad. We're ranked top 25%. But these are all districts that are doing it, and it could help us with that transition from good to great. Because we don't strive to be complacent. We strive to keep pushing forward, and I truly, wholeheartedly feel this is the next step for us to progress academically. So as I mentioned at the bottom, this is from elementaryschools.org. The approximate number is 2,711 elementary schools. So, and as you see, again, I could share with you, any of you that want to see this, the grade bands are broken up differently. Some are early childhood, and then one through four, five through eight is broken up differently. The point is that they're grade-band schools within their districts. And I know a lot of the superintendents here, they face some logistical concerns as they were progressing. But they always kept, the forefront of their thoughts was the educational welfare of their students. That is the driving force behind what we do. It's to ensure the best academic outcomes for our children. So currently, what have we done to this point? As I mentioned in the letter I sent out to you, we're still in the preliminary phases, but I promised you all when I got appointed that we were going to have communication consistent. So this is truly the beginning steps that we're doing. It is January. You know, some concerns have been, can we pull this off September? To give you all a little bit of background, in my previous district, Bogota, I was actually tasked with something similar. We had a building complex that opened up three buildings overnight. We absorbed 100 children out of nowhere. And through COVID, a private school in the town closed. We obtained that lease in April. I was named the principal in May. We opened up doors in September. Again, I wouldn't wish that upon my worst enemy on any given day, but it got done. We have nine months to work with this, and one thing I could proudly say, our administrative team is extremely cohesive. We text all day, we talk on the phone, we get along in and outside of the school, and we are all united when it comes to this, and we're all working together to get this done. So I have no doubt in my mind that by September, this can be done. So currently, we have done a building capacity audit. The first thing we're going to do is, before we even talk about this, can this work logistically? Do these students fit when we reallocate them? Ms. Jankini and Ms. Goldsack, our Director of Curriculum and Director of Special Services, he sat down, they did a complete building audit, just based on classroom space and our special needs populations in the classrooms needed, and they do fit. They fit, and they fit well. By doing this also, we're also going to be having more inclusive opportunities for our special needs populations in these buildings. We also did an audit of special education services. We need to make sure that all our students, all our students are getting the education and the resources they need to be successful. Ms. Goldsack confirmed, not only are we going to have all the resources available, we're going to have additional inclusive resources available. So there'd be more opportunities for our students to differentiate and to meet them truly where they are. We've done preliminary busing projections. So the way that looks is, we look at your address, we look at the school you would be corresponding to next year, and we did a preliminary audit of what the busing projections are. It is not drastically different. Those are minimal tweaks that we're going to be doing in-house. We're not going to have to reinvent the wheel when it comes to this. We'll get a little bit more into busing, and then we'll have some questions, but for those of you that are wondering about busing, the busing guidelines are if you reside within two miles of your school. That's usually how the busing guidelines work. There's additional logistics that we'll specifically talk to you and the families regarding where the busing would be, but if you reside within two miles from your school, you do qualify for busing. You know, there's such things that are deemed, you know, additional roads that are deemed that we have to bus, but those are more of a personal one-to-one conversation we'll be having with you based on where you live. We've been having dialogue with Town Hall and Secaucus PD. This has been in conjunction with them. From the beginning, I went to Town Hall, I spoke to Megan Ellington, Town Council, I said, this is what we're looking to do. It's not a surprise overnight. We involve Secaucus PD because traffic. Traffic patterns are something that we have to be realistic with. My job is the educational welfare and success of our students, and is to communicate with all stakeholders, with our colleagues at Secaucus PD, to make sure that traffic patterns are going to be working with this. What's next? We're going to have continuing coordination with Town Hall, with PD, and PD's been working with Department of Transportation to make sure that it is as seamless a transition as possible. Again, please let me stress to you, all the districts I've mentioned to you before have gone through this process. They are not the only district that has one road coming in and out from a different part of town. There are certain districts, like Emerson, for example, who has a train that runs through the middle of it. So imagine I have to wait for a train. Those of you, I've lived in areas with trains, and when you catch a train, you're there for a minute. So those are logistical concerns that we've had to navigate in different districts. Just have faith that we will work cohesively and united, and we will figure this out to the best of our measures. Our alignment of special services resources, as I mentioned, there'll be more inclusive resources at each building. So that is something we're looking to really implement, and this will be manifested through this redistricting initiative. Modification of curricular offerings. We're going to be talking to our elementary supervisors, to our building administrators, and now really start to tweak the curricular offerings we have in each school because it's going to be more centralized and more focused based on these grade bands. We're going to have continued communication with families. I promise you communication, this is going to be something we're going to keep on doing. Every step of the way, you will know what's going on. And please, if you hear something on the street that you have not heard from my mouth, email me. Because, you know, anything could be misconstrued, anything could be taken out of context. If you hear information that is different than what I've relayed, reach out. I would love to clarify for you. I strive to reply within 24 hours, and if that's not the case, with a couple of you that it's happened to, I say, blow me up, email me again. Say, hey, just following up. I will get back to you. So now, we're going to address some of the common questions that I've heard. The board members have also brought to me some questions that they've heard throughout the community. What is the purpose of this? And again, I can't stress enough, is to enhance the educational opportunities and outcomes of our students. That is it. We're not talking about the overcrowding. That is something that is continually said, and I want to take a moment to talk about the overcrowding. When we talk about overcrowding, it is overcrowding for Secaucus. It is not overcrowding for the other districts around the county. Average class size around the county is upwards of 27 students. Our class sizes right now are 23, 24, which, yes, is a little bigger than it has been, but we're in compliance, we're up to code. It is not an unsafe environment for our students. Is it a little bigger than we would like it to be? Absolutely. Are we striving to make them smaller? Yes. We're striving for optimal class sizes. But the term overcrowding, I don't think is really accurate for what is truly happening. Our numbers have increased slightly in the classrooms, but we're still educationally sound as far as those numbers. How would shuffling students from one school to another alleviate overcrowding? I guess I answered that question already. So, yes, I understand that this was the reason that we're doing the redistricting, which is shuffling around students logistically. I 100% agree with you, it doesn't make any sense, but that is not the reason we're doing this. It is for the educational outcomes of our students, to keep promoting from good to great. Will all students get bused? There's certain guidelines and parameters that are required for busing, so students who reside within a two-mile guideline of their school will be applicable for busing. You will be notified once reports are ran if you qualify. There's additional streets, depending on where you live, that also qualify for busing. That's why it's not a black-and-white statement. Once we start with this process, like I mentioned before, we're doing preliminary reports. If you have a specific question where you're going to be bused, feel free to reach out to your building administrator, and, you know, we'll try to provide you with that response. But we're going to be running these reports. Once we roll over, and once we know exactly where every student will be next year, then we can have a more targeted response for you. How will district mitigate increased traffic? We're currently in conversations with Secaucus PD Traffic Division, and they are also in contact with Department of Transportation. Those are our two key components here. The communication collaboration we have, we're in constant communication, we have a meeting next week, I believe, or two weeks from now. We're bringing our reports, they're bringing their reports, and we're going to fine-tune this and make it as seamless as possible. The Department of Transportation will also be a big help throughout this process. Why can't we just build a new school? Fair question. For those of you that are not aware, a school, a small school, a small school, is upwards of $250 million. So the question is, are you willing to pay for that? It's an expensive investment. You know, I completely agree. Another, a new school would be fantastic. You know, smaller class size, the better. But it is a tremendously large investment, which I truly believe we don't need at the moment. We could, we just need to fine-tune and tweak certain things, and it is not an overcrowding issue, like I mentioned. It is more of the educational component that we could be providing our students. Why are we more concerned about separating the middle school and high school? I'm glad you mentioned that. That is something that is also our top priority, and we're already working with schedules, we're already looking into that. That was one of the first things that was mentioned to me when I first got hired. And upon doing an order of the classrooms, the way the scheduling is set up and logistics, I could confidently say that will be remedied next year. But I beg to ask you the question, why is that such a big concern? Because we don't want our younger babies talking to our older babies, having conversations that are not age-appropriate. Like I mentioned before, they're six years apart. Our K-5 students are also six years apart. We just see them younger, but they might not be having age-appropriate conversations. Six years apart, six years apart, however you dice it. So that is an added benefit to the educational component that we're going to be offering with this initiative. And that is all I have for you. You know, this is the time that I welcome anyone who signed up to speaker ask questions.
You need to sign the sheet. Yep.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Forberty. I'm the attorney for the Secaucus School District, and this is the public forum that President Diadetta spoke about during her opening comments. This meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing any subject matter, but it is this redistricting proposal that is pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the Secaucus Public School District. Residents wishing to speak on such items must sign the register provided for this purpose and are required to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous, mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by these individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals and will not be responsible for those comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during this public session should carefully consider their comments since they could be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number 1100, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue informally. Your cooperation is appreciated. Thank you.
I'm going to call everyone up in the order in which they sign the sheet. I ask that you come up to the podium, and just a reminder, three minutes you have to speak. Thank you. Jenny Junos.
Hello.
Hi, welcome.
Hi. I'm Jenny Junos. I live in Harmon Cove Towers. That's what I have to say, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I apologize firsthand if I repeat something here. I try to X it out because some of the concerns were already addressed. While there are numerous reasons why redistricting presents challenges for my family, I want to emphasize a few crucial points that affect hundreds of parents. Consider those who carefully selected homes near the school, now facing the prospect of shuffling their kids across town, resulting in property value decreases. Think about parents without transportation options who could previously walk to school. Now they are forced to rely on school buses that may not accommodate a sick child or aftercare needs. Then there are parents juggling multiple children across two schools, dealing with dilemmas and involvement with the PTA and school activities. This unfair situation forces parents into difficult choices, deciding which child to accompany on a school trip, which school to volunteer for an event, or which child to watch at the Halloween parade. For those returning home late and tired, the burden of making two stops for aftercare pickup is an added strain. The hope for siblings to share a school experience is shattered, leaving younger children navigating school alone. The looming nightmare of commuting for thousands of parents and Secaucus residents adds another layer to this already complex situation. Most importantly, these changes deeply impact our children. The large grade classes may inadvertently create an environment where bullying thrives, negatively impacting the mental health and confidence of our children. This relating to students that are currently in the fourth grade that would be going into fifth grade and changing schools, the decision to relocate them to unfamiliar school could add unnecessary stress during a crucial period of their academic journey. Graduating is a milestone that should be celebrated in a familiar environment, not in an unfamiliar setting. The abrupt change in schools can disrupt established social connections, friendships, and emotional well-being. Children may struggle to adapt to a new environment affecting their academic performance and overall health. Unfortunately, redistricting falls short of addressing root causes like overcrowded classes, resource shortages, and teacher deficits. It appears as a superficial solution bypassing critical systematic issues in our education system. I want to add to this that this is not something I'm completely against. I understand we're trying to do what's best for our children, and I do agree that being in an environment where they're more close age might help them, but springing this on us, I know you was being spoken about or this was in the works. So if we had more time to be able to adapt to these changes, would be wonderful.
Those are all very valid concerns. So let's start addressing them little by little as we go. So as far as class sizes, class sizes are not going to be affected by this redistricting. The class sizes are going to remain the same. 100%, which is what we're striving for, more children their age in comparison to older children. Well, I don't necessarily agree with that because if it's a second grade student and now you have to have fifth grade students who might be a little more mature, it might actually decrease bullying in that sense. So having more age appropriateness is actually what we're striving for, and in many cases will lower the bullying cases. Yes, which, again, it's a progressive environment where ultimately when they're in middle school and high school, they're going to be having these same experiences anyway. So it's going to be a more controlled environment in the primary grades. As you go to secondary, upper elementary, they have a little more independence. But as far as age appropriateness, it's much more age appropriate by having grade bands in comparison to expanding them to larger grade bands. As far as grade four, that's something that I could personally speak to because when we inherited grade six and seven in my previous district, grade six was the moving upgrade. So there's a very, there's a ton of additional initiatives that can be done to make them feel special. You know, it's not only going to be fifth grade that might have their ceremony up here. We could do something in-house for our fourth grade. We could have a clap-off for fourth grade. We could do additional things that these are initiatives that we're going to be talking about with the building administrators. They're not going to be just shuffled along. We're going to make sure that they feel special and they're going to have appropriate things for them as well. And the following year, they are going to have the ceremony here as well. So there, if anything, fourth grade is getting two different ceremonies back-to-back years. So we're going to make sure that is equitable, we're going to make sure they feel appreciated and they feel special because they have dedicated a large amount of their years there. As far as friends, I would argue the opposite. You're going to be with all your friends anyway, and a lot of your other friends, if they play intermural sports or any additional sports, you might have some friends in Claritin you from Huber Street. We're going to be alleviating that issue because the majority of sports or clubs are more age-based. So by doing that, those students are going to be more, they're going to be together in a single building in comparison to different schools. So as far as friends, it will help alleviate that situation. And as far as staffing, we're fully staffed. We're one of the very few districts that I could say that we are completely staffed. And I encourage you to speak to any district in the county. I don't know about another one that is not fully staffed, that is fully staffed. The limit as far as, is as far as square footage per classroom. But again, the average in the county is about approximately 27, and here we don't go above 25. And that's probably one or two classrooms at best in the district. Yeah, that's as high as we go. And the average is about 27.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Good evening. Thank you for spending your time tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and ask some questions. Quano, 685 H Street. Topic is basically follow-up questions and/or, you know, general analysis of what's been presented tonight. Just a quick background on myself. I moved here with my family 30 years ago. I've been living in C-Caucus for 30 years. My house or my family occupy eight households in town for the past 30 years. I am a byproduct of the C-Caucus School District, specifically Claritin School, where I now reside two blocks away, as you can see, 685 H Street, shares the same address as Claritin School at 685. The general questions that I have tonight relate to the presentation. I think there were a lot of discussions about Emerson Traffic. The population size is 7,000, we're about 22,000. We're 6 and 1/2 square feet, Mayor Gennell, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but 6 and 1/2 square feet for our town relative to their 2 and 1/2 approximately. I think the analysis has some configuration or adjustments to be made about the busing. My other question is, what is the economic impact? I think I can speak on behalf of the room tonight in the town. Whatever incremental costs we are spending on this, I believe the teachers deserve to inherit that cost and get paid higher than what they're paid today. My bigger question is, how do you guys define academic excellence or academic success? Is that bridging the gap from 400 and change rank to 200 or above? What gets us 200 spots in the ranking? Is ranking an absolute target for success? Is it the rate of change of that ranking? I would argue if this was proposed 10 years ago, what was our ranking then? What is our ranking now? What is the rate of change of that rank relative to how much we had to spend to get there? I would also ask, what is the comparison spend per pupil in those rankings above 200 relative to C-Caucus? And again, what is the rate of change of that spend per pupil? I think these are all basic analytical questions that we can ask and answer to make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As far as statistical analysis, that is not my major, but I'll definitely do a little more research and then get back to you. As far as what do we define as academic excellence, it's constant progression. I'm a firm believer, and I've always told my students, if we're 1% better than we were yesterday, that is the goal. So our job as educators and as educational leaders is to keep finding root causes that can inch us in that direction upward, in that linear progression. So I wholeheartedly believe that this is one of those root causes, one of these data points, that once we account for, we will start projecting that positive direction. There will be other stuff, like I mentioned, the curriculum programming and offerings, you know, will be adjusted according to grade band. But yes, I truly believe that this will be the start of much more directed instruction, much more directed professional development for our staff. And as far as 200 points, 100 points, this was just a relative data point as far as what other districts look like. I will never say that we have to be like any other district because we are C-Caucus, and that is beyond good enough. But us as C-Caucus, we can be better. I don't ever promote complacency. I always promote to strive for better within myself, within my students, within my peers, within my colleagues. So this is the reason why we're doing this, to strive to be that 1% better, to keep that progression going. And this will have a trickle-down effect as far as our educational offerings, our resources, equitable instruction, professional development, age-appropriate behaviors, and peers, collegiality. There's a lot that comes to benefit with this. So I truly do believe that it is better. As far as a quantifiable measure of what better is, that is, you ask 100 people, it's going to be 100 different answers. My belief is, better today than we were yesterday, and better tomorrow than today, which, that is the why, that is the reason why we're progressing in this direction. Thank you.
My name is Kim Quinn, and I reside at 281 Paul Antares. I am a concerned parent of three children in our school district, and I am also the PTA president at Huber Street School. I am deeply invested in the welfare and success of our schools, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you on the matter of the utmost importance, the future of our educational system. The proposed redistricting plan has sparked apprehension among many parents and community members because of the lack of transparency and conflicting details. According to Dr. Alfonso's interview with the Patch on January 19th, the plan was to have pre-K through second grades at Claritin School. In the NJ.com interview that came out yesterday, the plan has changed. Kindergarten through second grades at Claritin, that's the plan for now. And as of yesterday, third grade was still undecided. From the moment the plan was announced to the public, these details should have been known by the decision-makers. The uncertainty of the details and the conflicting information provided to the public has us concerned and frustrated. I researched similar plans in our area, specifically the Bogota School District. Granted, their plan was on a much larger scale, which included a referendum. The Bogota Board of Education stressed a commitment to transparency and community engagement. They also proposed forming a committee of stakeholders. According to their plan, they had multiple renovation projects ahead of the realignment of the grades to ensure the schools are age-appropriate. Is this something that we are doing as well? I mean, the playground at Huber Street School is so small, and you're going to house third grade through fifth grade. You're going to double the amount of students at that age level. You know, the playground, in my opinion, is so tiny. The gym is small. To have students of this age group all under one roof is a concern of a lot of the Huber Street School parents. You don't see a lot of the older parents at Huber Street coming out because in their minds, they're not affected, right? Because their children get to stay at that school. But when you think about the logistics and how small that school is, it's a concern. It's my concern. My son is going into fifth grade next year, my daughter is going into fourth. They are not technically affected because they don't have to move schools. But this is my concern as a parent, is the size of the playground, the size of the gym. So that is just really my question. Are there any projects in the works to make sure that the schools are age-appropriate? And how are we funding those projects? I mean, that's another question, right? So in closing, delaying the redistricting process would provide an opportunity to address any capacity issues or infrastructure needs that may arise. C-Caucus also has unique logistical challenges that will be affected by the realignment of the grades. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you for your questions. As far as the conflicting reports, those reports are two different times. When I first spoke to the Patch, we were in the middle of doing the building audit capacity, and I said, third grade was undetermined at a time. Since then, we have done the building audit, and it will be kindergarten to second grade at Claritin, and it'll be third through fifth at Huber Street. So that is a projection. As far as a playground and gym, I understand that you say they're small, but rarely if ever is the entire school ever at one time. You know, there's, there's different lunch periods, different classes might go at different times. During gym, there's one class who's taking gym at a time. So the gym is definitely within compliance of our student size. Actually, Huber Street has a very nice gym in comparison to a lot of our neighboring districts. So as far as space, you know, if you're looking at the entire school there at once, it might look overcrowded because there are bigger bodies, but rarely if ever is that the case that all students are in that physical space at the same time.
Thank you. Yep. No, we took it right off there. Good evening. My name is Alexandra Landolfo. Thank you Superintendent Alfonso and the rest of the Board of Education for organizing this meeting tonight to discuss the potential redistricting of our elementary schools. I'm here tonight as the PTA president from Claritin School, but also as a parent of two children within the district, one in fourth grade and one in kindergarten. So I am someone who is very much impacted by this decision. I'm not here today to say this is a bad idea at all. I just want to preface my entire, and I actually don't have any questions. It's more of just concerns and ideas and things of that nature. I do understand the positive impact of eventually having all of our C-Caucus schools organized by grade level. With that said, I have concerns about the timeline of implementation for such a monumental decision that will not only impact our children and our district, but also our entire town. You did answer a lot of my questions at the presentation, so I'm kind of going to go off the cuff a little bit here, but we're going to try to remain with my notes. So one of the main reasons I'm concerned about this transition is truly the timeline and how it will impact these students, specifically that third through fifth age group. And it's not just because my son is one of them. Obviously, no one likes change. But for children of this age group who were very much, very recently, had their school lives disrupted by COVID, this is the first year in which they're learning in an environment that's stable, in a school that's stable. To take those same children at this same point in time, right when they're getting back into it, and having them have to relocate to another school just seems unfair to me. There has to be a better way to transition these students. There just has to be. And to your point earlier, Dr. Alfonso, I understand making the fourth graders feel really special, I get it. But as the PTA president, as somebody who's writing the checks, our budget has already been done, and now we have to go back and like recreate the wheel a little bit to make sure that third, fourth, and fifth can all leave with some sort of really exciting experience. And that's putting a lot of pressure back on us, right? As a parent, I also wonder about certain aspects of each school and how they will be ready for students that they will house come September, which is a very small timeframe, in my opinion. I know that it's been talked about for 10 years, but as I think Jenny had noted, many of us in this room have only heard about it very recently. And I think in public meeting notes, it's only been mentioned twice in 2022. So this is kind of very new for a lot of us, so just give us the benefit of the doubt a little bit, you know? With the new kindergarten classrooms in Claritin, will they be ready and equipped for bathrooms within the classroom for those students? Kim and I are obviously very much on the same wavelength here with the Huber Street School. Is it enough school, is it enough room in the courtyard that's the size of a shoebox for recess for these very big children? And those are just some small infrastructure examples that I was concerned with, and it just keeps bringing me back to what is the rush? Another reason I'm concerned about the implementation and what it would look like is the fact that there were conflicting statements recently in the press, but you just spoke to that, so I'm going to skip over all of that part. But I also wonder if the rumors circulating about potentially bringing sixth grade back down to Huber hold any merit? And if so, what will that look like? And when will that be implemented? Or are we just going to continue shifting students from school to school like chess pieces until the redistricting looks like what we want it to look like? And with all that said, I just want to press pause. I implore you to take a step back, think about what all of us in this room are feeling emotionally with something like this. I want to be properly planned. I'd like committees that include all of these stakeholders, the parents, the administrators, the PTA, DPW, traffic experts, all of that, in order for this plan that we all want to be successful. To be truly successful, you need the buy-in. You need that buy-in. I want this to work. Change is good and oftentimes necessary, and I understand the necessity of this. I do, I truly do. I wouldn't be here if I didn't. But it has to be done in a way that makes sense, and for some people right now, it just doesn't make sense. So what I'm tasking you guys with is just make it make sense.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for organizing this meeting. I want to thank you for the time, and I want to thank you for listening. I understand that this is for the greater good, and while I do support, in theory, the initiatives that are being proposed to us, I need to speak as a parent of a fourth grader from Claritin. By the way, I forgot to mention, my name is Jennifer Bachman, and I live in Exchange. So I come here with specific questions. My, my families here have done a phenomenal job in sharing concerns. I have specific questions, whether they can be answered now or in a future dialogue, I would greatly appreciate that. You kept speaking of the curriculum and how it will be better implemented, sorry if that's not the right word, better tailored to our students in grades three through five. Specifically, what does that look like? Are all of our teachers from Claritin just coming over to Huber? Are all of the special services, and you had mentioned that as well, greater access to special services, are they all coming from Claritin and being dumped into Huber? My son has an IEP. He, for the first time, as Alex Landolfo had said, this is the first time that our students, that our children are feeling that they're in a stable environment, and he is finally starting to flourish. So I will. So how will my fourth grader, who has an IEP at Claritin, how will he flourish? How will he be able to transition to fifth grade at a new school? And you know what? He had some questions that I wanted to ask on his behalf. Will the Will the specials be the same? Will I be with all of my classmates now? Or will the, the classes be, um, will I be mixed in with my Huber friends? Will I have lunch at the same time? My son likes to eat, don't we all? And if we have, I don't know, sixth grades of fifth grade, how are they all going to, they're not going to be able to eat at the same time? Are some fifth graders going to have to eat lunch at 10 o'clock in the morning while others have to eat at 12? Again, these are very specific questions to, uh, so how is the curriculum going to change? How is it going to, how are we going to support that? Uh, let's see here. Oh, can I ask that? Will parents and students have an opportunity to tour Huber Street in advance? We will be treated as new students. How are we, as incoming third through fifth graders and fifth grade families from Claridan, how are we going to be integrated into the Huber community? I know the Huber community will welcome us with open arms, but how are we going to feel that we belong? When will teacher assignments be made? How far in advance will we know? Will there be an orientation for families that are coming into Huber Street? These are all very, again, very specific questions as it relates to my family, my child. You want to make it special for our incoming, uh, fifth graders coming from Claridan. How are we, how are we going to make that special? Someone had mentioned, uh, let's see here, um, you had also mentioned, just back to curriculum for a moment, additional resources. What does that look like? How are we paying for these, these, all these wonderful initiatives? I, I would like to know where, where the money's coming from, or if it'll be coming from our pockets. Um, oh, let's see. And what does, um, you had mentioned, again, back to curriculum, you had mentioned about equitable access, and you had mentioned about, uh, Orthon Gilling, Orthon Gillingham being in the Claridan School. Will that continue at Huber? My son is currently, um, he has tutoring services, and that follows that model. And so, again, going back to the curriculum, will the curriculum be the same? What will we, we be advancing? And totally off topic, what's happening to the Mill Ridge Building?
Jennifer, I'm sorry, I'm just going to have to ask you to wrap it up. The time is up. But just, go ahead, finish. You can finish.
Um, again, my questions were kind of all over the place. I really want to thank you for your time, and I look forward to your responses. Thank you.
Thank you. So pardon me if I missed any, and feel free to shoot me an email after. I try to write most of them down. So as far, first of all, congratulations to your child. That is fantastic news. I'm very happy to hear that. That's great. And we're trying to make this as seamless as possible. And as far as in your child, since you mentioned an IP, it's, you know, you made it public, anything that's in the IP is our sole responsibility to make sure that it's accounted for. So we're going to make sure that every single resource you need will be available wherever your child is. Doesn't matter the facility. That, the facility is just a location, the services will follow without. And as far as our staffing and our special services, there, there's going, Ms. Goldsack is going to be in charge of making sure that staffing is appropriately. She's going to work with the building administrators to make sure that we have the adequate staff to provide all classrooms. As far as additional resources, we're looking at additional inclusion models because now we have the older students that we could work a little more with inclusive models. And as far as progressing that independence, we're looking at creating possibly teams with teachers that teach multiple subjects, and as soon as we transition from class to class, but in a much smaller setting. It might be the next door classroom in comparison to middle school, high school, or traveling across the building. So there's just a little bit of independence that we're solely trying to build, although it looks like it might be a big of a shock now, I can personally tell you the shock getting to middle school and high school, it's, it's a big one. So if we could facilitate that a little bit now, it will pay off tenfold later on. And as far as open house orientation, I'm glad you mentioned that, it's one of the things I missed. I, I was actually having conversations with our school administrators as far as having an open house throughout the year. We're going to be having orientations for families as well. It's going to be a great big welcome to C-Caucus, welcome to Huber Street, welcome to Claridan, for our respective families. So again, since I did say this is the preliminary part, this is the primary part of our initiative, information will go out once those dates are set, but we're going to definitely, absolutely offer an opportunity for our families to come and see the buildings, see where your children's classes are going to be and all that. We just, you know, we do ask you to give us a little bit of time as we, you know, get, get towards that. Um, mix students, I will mix students, I'm not exactly sure. You said something about mixing students, I just, I shorthanded it.
Question was, when?
I can hear you, you don't have to, it's fine.
Question is, so when Claridan classes come?
Oh, the mixed students in classes.
Yes.
We're trying to integrate that communal approach as early as possible within our students. We're trying to build those, those friendships early on, because in middle school and high school, we don't know who's Huber Street and Claridan. So once we, once we promote this initiative, we're, they're going to be, they're going to be mixed. We want them to start learning to work with each other. And honestly, we might see like a big, a bigger difference than our actual students do. I could see firsthand when it happened in my previous district. On occasion, you heard the, the term of whatever mascot it was, but students are much more resilient, and they don't think of, of a lot of the things that we look, we think of. There are a lot of, um, there are a lot of sports teams, you might play on the PS5 or whatever it is together from different schools. So they do already interact much more so than sometimes we think. So I think it must be, it'll be much more seamless than we, you know, than we might So we always, always decide our students usually based on what the teachers that they be most successful with. So we have conversations with previous year teachers, you know, we see, um, the learning styles, the behaviors, characteristics, and we usually try to pair them up with the teachers that most align to their needs. And as far as lunch, it's not one lunch period, it's multiple lunch periods. So it's not going to be, you know, 500 students in one lunch period. So lunch structure looks similar to now, it'll be two different periods. It's up to the building principal to assign which grade band will be having lunch at which time. But it's very similar to logistics that are now. As far as day-to-day logistics and periods and all that, we're looking at very minimal changes. You know, based on busing and based on traffic pattern, which we talked to C-Caucus PD, we might have a little bit of a staggered start time by a few minutes from one school to another, and that will might dictate, you know, a 10 minutes plus or minus on a, on a class schedule. But again, it's too early to tell that, but this, I'm giving the maybe that it might be. But it's going to be as close to seamless, as close to uniform as possible. Open house and our budget, as far as our budget, um, there is, there's not a significant cost. A significant cost is going to be furniture. And again, since we are transitioning our students, Claridan will be inheriting a lot of, of good, brand-new furniture from Huber Street that's from the primary levels to fund those needed students, and Huber Street will be inheriting a lot of the Claridan furniture that's recently purchased for our older students. So it's not going to be an absorbing cost to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Giuseppe Landolfo. I live in Harmon Cove, 459 Dunlop Plaza. Nice to see everybody. Okay, um, so a couple things. Mr. No back there had some great comments, so I want to say that I would love to see all that, that, those data points, if you can investigate that, because I did a quick Google search, and it could be off, but in 2017, it looks like our schools were ranked like in the 600s, and now we're in the 400s, so it's improved 200 points without any redistricting. So we're doing something right. Also, you mentioned, you know, it's been in the work for 10 years, and you talk about COVID being a distraction, but COVID was only three years ago, so what happened 10 years ago? And why is, like, you know, this happening all of a sudden? But whatever, forget about that point. My only point is only like, um, I heard about this one time, um, and it was after the 2023 election of the Board of Ed members, and I'm curious why it wasn't mentioned before that, so that you guys could talk about it, so I could hear all your opinions before the election, uh, because it could assuage me one way or the other, right? And then also, you know, yeah, exactly. So, um, so those are my questions, those two. Thanks. Have a good one.
I don't know if I can read this one. Kimberly Perigene, Perigino?
As far as response to your question, I, I wasn't here 10 years ago, so I can't answer that, since I'm the one answering the questions. And as far as the board members, I can't ask for the board members either. So I, I'm not a board member, so I couldn't tell you why.
Can I speak? Is the question for the new board members, myself, Alex, and I'm, I'm not understanding? So I can't speak to that. We're new board members when we run and we come and do the meet the candidates night. We're not privy to any information that's already currently, or any talks or discussions that the current board is, is having, so, um, I, I can't really speak to that. If that was the question, I'm not sure. I can't speak for the other board members.
It certainly was not on my platform that I even had on my radar to speak about, because I wasn't a board member, so I wasn't privy.
Yes. No, we weren't privy to that. We spoke to pass in my opening statement when I discussed about speaking to pass board members and to touch a little on what you said about, um, the reasons we were giving were COVID was one of them, and also, um, the changing of administration. There was never, you know, anybody that was in place, um, as Dr. Alfonso is, and, and ready to move forward with this plan. That's what, that's the information that we were given. So if that answers your question.
Hi. Sorry. Hi, my name's Kimberly Perigene. Uh, okay, so I just have a few things. Um, and I think this has been asked, but I'm not really sure. How does this improve the curriculum more than it is now? So what's going on with the curriculum? What's wrong with it that we need to, that putting all the kids, redistricting will improve it? What exactly does this do to the curriculum? As a third grade teacher myself, uh, there's many times I go to my second grade coworkers, I speak with them about their curriculum, so I know what my students did last year. I know how the, the second grade teachers, what they taught, how they taught it, so that I can better serve my third graders. That's difficult to do, especially in this case. I won't have anyone in the, I wouldn't, I don't work here, but I wouldn't have anyone in the building from second grade to talk to, to see issues that my students were hav, were having with second grade material. You spoke about the negatives of having different ages in one building. What about the benefits? In my district, we have students from older grades who come to help in the younger grades, and, uh, it helps provide role models. We've had programs called Readers Are Leaders, where the sixth graders come and read with the younger students. They come and help during lunch. What about the benefits of having an older role model that they can look up to? They won't have anyone except for like, you know, at most two years older that won't be able to really help much. Lastly, C-Caucus is obviously a growing town. Schools, what happens when the schools fill up soon? And what do we do then when we need a new school, that school that will be built? Obviously, that'll come at some point. Are we moving kids around again? That could not be that far off. What happens then?
Thank you. So as far as curriculum, you know, we did talk about a much more directed approach because our grade band teachers are going to be together, our PLCs are going to be much more fruitful, and we're going to be creating teams where teachers could co-teach, and students will have a very early idea of what the transition from classes will be. So as far as the logistical component of our grade bands, it's going to be working. As far, I, I've missed a couple of the other ones. So the last question was, as far as, we can't predict a new school. We could only work where, where we're at now. You know, we do have predictions later on, and when that time comes, we will try to be as proactive as possible and try to deal with it as early as possible. But you know, right now, this is where we're at in town. It, it, we cannot build in anticipation of something that may or may not happen. You know, that's not fair to the taxpayers, that's not fair to educators, that's not fair to anyone. So we always want to make sure that we have the adequate resources for our students. We're not going to build something in anticipation of something that may or may not manifest itself.
Dr. Alfonso, she also mentioned about the older students, um, being there for the younger ones.
So currently, we do have programs at the high school where some of our high school students do work with younger students. So it's something that will give our high school students more of opportunity to come down and work with our younger students and be role models. I feel like older students from the high school level, again, monitored by teachers, will have a much greater impact, because in my previous districts, we have done that. Currently, the high school does have some sort of programs in place, but we're looking to expand those programs and give, give more, much more back to the community and to our students in the younger grade bands. So that's something we'll be working with the high school level to really implement and be great peers for our younger students. Potentially, we're looking to create programs of that sort as peer models. No, that is embedded into their schedule as a potential class. You know, we're at a very time, strict time schedule here.
I'm sorry. We can talk after. Okay.
Hi, everybody. I want to thank you guys for your time and for having us here today. A lot of my concerns were readdressed. My name is Tim Melish. I live on Third Street, two blocks away from Claridan School, where, um, my third grade son goes and my kindergarten daughter. Um, and unfortunately, uh, this will probably, if this goes past, will be the last time that they're in school together until he's a senior in high school. So you're going to have a really hard time convincing me that taking my son over to Huber Street, when he lives two blocks away from an elementary school, is a great idea. As I said, the parents addressed a lot of the things that, uh, concerns that I have, the logistics of it and that, um, but a lot of the comments that were made, I feel like I just want to elaborate on. I understand that you said in Bogota, you, in nine months, turned around and leased a new building, and I have full confidence that you can do that. I think that what most of the parents here want to know is, should we? Should we rush it? Shouldn't it be more talked about and thought were? Because these are our kids' lives, you know, and out of everything here, that's what's most apparent to me. I grew up with a lot of you guys, I know a lot of familiar faces. Your mom was my school nurse, and your brother was my quarterback. Um, so I have a long history here, um, and there's just, I just want to say that, um, on top of everything here, I just hope you guys have our kids' best interests in mind. You said about, you talked about in middle school, seeing a shell-shocked sixth grader who didn't know what to do. How is putting that on a third grader's plate going to make that better? And there's just, I mean, we addressed a lot of the things, but as far as the overcrowding of schools, and you said you can't predict it. Um, I know you've only been here for a short time, but over the past six years, C-Caucus has added some huge building development of at least 300 units. That's 300 more families. Just this past year, a 400-unit high-rise was put up. I'm in construction, and I actually worked that building for a little bit. There's two more coming. That's 800 more families moving in. So you say that putting up a new school is too expensive, but what's the cost of our education? A lot of the rankings that I believe that you're putting up there have a lot to do with student-teacher ratios, and while you say that 25 is, is acceptable, what was it 10 years ago? You know, the population is exploding in C-Caucus, and when a third school goes up, are, are we going to switch our students every two years? You know, we have to plan, I know you can only plan for what you have now, but those buildings are going up. These buildings have gone up. These families are moving to C-Caucus. This population is going to grow. And if this plan doesn't address what's coming, then how can we move forward with it? How is it fair to my kids if I have to keep on moving them over and over and over again? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I definitely understand your concerns. As far as the third grade shell-shock that you mentioned, we're trying to alleviate that as it goes. The shock from a more progressive, less independent environment that a third grade would be, where students will first be walked with their teachers, where the classes will be switching, they won't necessarily have lockers yet, it'd just be a smaller, much, much smaller incremental transition from third through fifth, is very much different than what we were mostly brought up with, where from elementary, you were just dropped into middle school, and it's, you're changing classes, you have to follow a schedule, you might have the same class every day, you have a locker you have to get to, worried about being late to class, you might have detention each period of your late each period. So we're trying to slowly, by doing this, make small incremental changes to their independence. So So it is going to be a little bit of a shock, but throughout the long span of these years, it'll be much less of a shock when they truly are asked to become independent in the middle high school years. So as the goal, you're right, there is going to be a little bit of shock, but we can hold their hand much more at a middle school level where everything is so fast-paced. So we're trying to show them a little bit of it, but also help them and guide them along the way. I could tell you from jumping from elementary to middle, it's a drastic change. All right. So the other question was, as far as our buildings, you know, I understand and thank you for your feedback that you're in construction. That's something that I'm going to be closely working with Mayor Gennelli and the town council to have projected numbers and see how we could explore options to expand. But as of right now, you know, these conversations have not alluded to that area, so we're going to look to have additional conversations to see what the projections look like and see what options we do have.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Ted Anderson.
Good evening. How are you? I wasn't really aware that we were going to be able to speak tonight, so it's a little, I'm a little haphazard here. But I will say this, I'm a teacher in the Department of Education in New York City, so I'm not completely unfamiliar with how the education system and school boards work. I will say that this meeting started out by, I'm not sure who it was that said, this has been going on for 10 years. I've lived here for eight years, this is the first time I've heard anything about it. Again, this, this only, I'm going to repeat lots of what other people said here, which is that this is sprung on the parents and on these kids. We just went through COVID and remote learning. And remember, I am a teacher, so, and I am a teacher in special education, so I do know something about children and their education. And there are plenty of studies that are out there that suggest that this will be very destabilizing to them as well. You may look at some of the numbers and say, well, other districts have done this. That's fine. Maybe, maybe they've been successful, and that's great, but it doesn't mean that we have to do it immediately. Many of the students and adults, parents walk to these schools. They do not take buses. The traffic situation, I know you said would be addressed. Well, this weekend, we got a little preview at the cheer competition, which was held here, and when the traffic was backed up on Patterson Plank Road to Dunkin' Donuts and was not moving. Is that how it's going to be every morning? And if people are walking, all those people that walk, right? I know at least half of the parents walk to Claridin. They're all going to be bussed? That's, do you have that many extra buses? Or that, really? I just don't believe that that's possible. And I don't think it's good for the town. We have one way in and out of the north and south side. You have parents that have children in multiple schools. How are they going to deal with this? We say we have the children's interest, you know, at heart, and I'm sure that you do, but I don't think you're considering all the factors that go into this. Like someone said, I believe it was our PTA representative, that third grade through fifth grade is a very important time in their education. And it's a very important transition. I don't understand how moving them to another elementary school makes going to middle school any easier.
Ted, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up. Thank you. Allison Miller?
Hi, thank you. My name is Allison Miller, and I live in Harmon Cove. I'm also an educator. I've worked in middle school education for 25 years. I have a third grader at Claridin, and now I have a ninth grader at the upper school. I think my first question is, for the sake of transparency, it's unclear to me as a parent if this is a done deal, if this decision has absolutely been made. I do appreciate you giving us the time to share our feedback. And ultimately, it feels also disingenuous if this decision's already been made that we're having this forum. As someone who's worked in middle school for a very long time, I very much understand the transition from elementary school to middle school, and I'm all for giving independence to our students as young as they can handle it, as it's developmentally appropriate. But I think you see sixth graders having a meltdown at the middle school because sixth grade used to be a part of elementary school. And we're continually pushing our children to mature at a more quicker rate. I think every adult in this room would, would probably agree to the fact that our children now, with all the access to technology and the internet, et cetera, are growing up more and more quickly than we ever did as young people. And I do think this model of separating the students will actually encourage that. I want my child to be independent as a third grader, but I also want him to have that nest, that home-based feeling. Selfishly, my family moved here from Los Angeles three years ago, and one of the reasons we specifically chose Secaucus was because it has one elementary school, one elementary school on either side of town, a middle school and a high school. It's a very small, basic, you know, it's a very small system. And when we moved, my son was in first grade, and I liked the idea that he was going to be at one school for his entire elementary school career, and now that's wholly being disrupted. So, you know, many people think the K through eight model is actually the best model, especially for adolescents. We don't have that model. I just don't see how having the students transition more is going to build that independence. I think it's perfectly capable to do that in the system that we have. And I also think frankly, many of the pedagogical goals that you're setting for yourself, they can also be accomplished with the current system that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Peter Furka?
As I mentioned, we're still in the very primary stages of this initiative, so it is not a complete process at this point. There's still many data points that have to be analyzed before that complete decision is made. And if and when that decision's made, it will be communicated to the community.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I'm Peter Furka.
I'm sorry, Peter, can you hold on one second?
Sure.
Do you have a question for me that you're shouting back there? Yes, we represent the Board of Education, correct. What, what was? Yes, it's a vote, it's a votable item, correct. I believe we, Dr. Alfonso mentioned that. Okay. I'm not going to entertain the conversation any further. I answered your question, and I'm going to let Peter speak. Thank you.
Good evening, and I'm completely changing the discussion, and, but I must applaud everybody, and I truly do. I've been in Secaucus 45 years. I live currently in Harmon Cove. In fact, I am the president of the Harmon Cove Four Association. That's why I'm here, because the Harmon Cove complex has over 1,000 families, and all of them will be bussed. And that's just the way it is. Now, mine is more of a mechanical issue. It's how many school bus stops do we have and how many do we need? Right now, for the younger crew, there's two bus stops, one in the front, so to speak, and one under Harmon Cove Four, I'm sorry, Harmon Cove Towers. And as the president, I have made initiatives, including cameras, and made it such that we could set up a third bus stop. And in my background as a quality analyst, I know that what we'll do is improve the current unsafe hazardous situation where too many kids are in one spot and not enough. And then we, Harmon Cove Four, who never really had enough kids so that it was appropriate at the time, are now kid flu, full, and we'd like to be able to set it up. So what I've done is presented the board with a color version of the narrative explaining it. Again, as a quality analyst, it's like a step process, you know, A, B, C, one, two, three. It belittles, in a sense, the importance of this conversation because I can respect this conversation seriously. I have twin daughters. They graduated from the, this school system. In fact, so well was this school system supportive of them that they graduated within the top 10 of their high school, got excellent scholarship supports, excellent direction for those scholarships, entered St. Peter's University, graduated from St. Peter's University. My Kristen, a double major, was the valedictorian. Natalie, a double major, was the valedictorian, both of them. So my head was this big, thank God for big doors. But my point is that it was and is and will always be about a positive working together. And I'm proud of everyone here, including the board, for bringing that up. So that is really a conclusion of what I've come to do, just to offer you the opportunity in my time to help make sure safety is the most important thing. And again, it's the parents, the kids. Right now, we do a lot of vehicular stuff, and I'm proposing much more walking around, at least within our community, to get to the buses. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much for offering. We will definitely be taking you up on that.
Ling Dao?
Thank you. My name is Ling. I'm actually a new resident of Secaucus. I bought my house right next to school, Claridin, at Fort Walter. This year will be the first year my daughter's attending kindergarten there. So as you can see, I'm quite impacted by this, but still, I come here with an open mind, so I don't have anything written down, and I want to hear what everyone has to say. And in my background, I am a data scientist, so I'm very much into data and analysis to see if something is positive or worthwhile doing. By listening to all of the arguments so far, one of the biggest one was that this is good for the children and that you have brought up a comparison between all the district and where we're at. However, I do want to mention that there is a saying in my trade that causation does not imply correlation. Just because these score are high-ranked does not mean that this redistrict was the cause of it or that they're correlating any other way. So I want to ask, as my question is, if we are going forward this, how are we going to measure the success of this? Are we just doing by ranking, score, or what is the method of how we're going to say if this is successful or not? Secondly, if this is unsuccessful, who will be held, you know, ultimately held accountable for this? Because this is putting a lot of stress on parents and children. So if this does not work out, I think someone needs to be held accountable, or at least, you know, put into more consideration before we go forward with this. So I think that's important to say. And I'd just like to say that when I first heard about the news, it was a couple days ago through an email, I opened it and then it says redistricting. So without doing anything, I opened a petition online just to see if anybody's against it, that is as much as I am. To my surprise, without doing any promotion, without going town to town, door to door, there has been over 250 people that live in Secaucus that have signed to be against this move. So I would like to know who is for this change? How many people have voted for this change? What, you know, what are their background is? Why are we moving forward this? And so that's one of the bigger questions I have. Lastly, I just want to say, I think a lot of people already addressed this, and a lot of people have voiced a concern why this wasn't brought out during the election of the board, and I understand that at the time, this might not be known to the board that this is going to be issued. But again, the board is meant to serve the community, and I would like to tell the people that under the New Jersey Constitution, that any board member can be recalled by the public if the public determines that they're no longer serving or interested in my, all it takes is 160 days for 25% of people living in town that agrees to it, then the board member can be recalled. So I want to let everybody know that this isn't an option.
Thank you for your information. So the first one is how we can be measured? We're not solely being measured on rank. That's not a fair assessment to anyone, to our children, to our educators, to anyone. So some of the things we will be measured on is we'll have school climate surveys to make sure that the academic climate of our schools is intact. Because if students don't feel safe, if students don't feel appreciated, and students don't feel welcome, they're not going to learn. That is proven. So we're going to make sure that the climate is where it needs to be to measure our student's success. And then we do have some quantifiable data points, like, you know, our state assessment scores and yes, our rankings as well. So it's going to be various data points that we're going to measure our success, and if we are inching towards that direction. And if not successful, listen, I'm a big believer that if something goes wrong, I need to look in the mirror, and if something goes great, I'm looking out the window. Our students, if they're successful, it's because of them. It's because of our teachers, it's because of what they do day to day, it's because of you, the parents. If something goes wrong, it is my job to figure out where it went wrong and to fix it. So I will take full accountability if something, not this, anything does not succeed, and making my priority to make it right. So that's something that I fully will take accountable, and that's something that I promise leading this district, that not this, any single thing that does not meet the expectations, I will be the one accountable, I'll be the one to collaborate with my peers, with my board, and make sure it is done right. And I think that's it.
The next speaker, I'm not sure if I'm going to pronounce this right, I'm having trouble reading it. Jigmie Phileas? I may be pronouncing it wrong. Did someone sign after Ling Dao? Do they remember where they signed? I can't pronounce the name, I apologize. Okay. Okay, there you go. All right. Catherine Vina.
Hi, good evening. My name is Catherine Vina. I live on Franklin Street, probably two blocks from Huber Street. I am a rookie mom. My daughter just started pre-K. I have a little one, she's one and a half, so she's right behind her. I have learned so much in the last hour that I've been here. I am all for improving the education of all our children, all the kids, especially this town. I've lived here for 20 years. I have been here since middle school. You know, I think, just listening to everybody, what is the goal here? What is the goal for this redistricting? I'm not against it completely and I'm not for it. I see a lot of the pros and cons, but, you know, I just, I'm failing to see the actual problem. Like, what is the problem that we're trying to solve by doing this? And like a few people had said earlier, just make it make sense. As a new mom, it's very uncomforting to have to deal with this now. Because again, you know, my daughter will be going from, right now she's in Mildredge, so she'll be going from one school to another, to another, to another, to another. And, you know, that can be, yeah, that can be pretty tough, pretty destabilizing, I feel too. So, I mean, I don't like change, I don't like moving. So again, I think, you know, my, a lot of my questions that I did have were answered, but I think my, my other few concerns were also, you know, a lot of these, I think it's safe to say that our town is only expanding. It's growing every year. There's more and more people, and like the gentleman said back there, they've just built two new, like apartment complexes, and not just like, you know, 50 apartments, 10 apart, it's like 400 apartments plus. Like, I mean, what are we doing here? Is this like a mayor, like, do we have to have a town meeting or, like, with the mayor or with the state? Because I, I don't know, like, what are we doing to, you know, deny those? Because instead of that, maybe we could build more- Because instead of that, maybe we could build more schools. I mean, is that the real prob, I mean, we're only going to keep getting more and more kids, more and more families. I mean, I'm thinking in the future now, okay, like, my daughter just started. Right now, is her classroom going to be 20, 25 kids? And the next year or two, is it going to be 28, 29? What are you guys going to do then? You know what I mean? Like, what does that look like? What is, I guess what I'm also trying to say is, we're doing this now, but what are we doing to solve the bigger problem? Again, more and more people are coming, more and more kids are going to be going to schools. Or is there like an implementation where we're, you know, I mean, we can't deny education to any kids, right? You can't deny, hey, you can't go here, you can't go here. So what is the actual solve for that? Or do we have a plan to build a new school? I mean, again, there is no way this town is getting smaller, you know what I mean? So that was another of my concerns. Another one of my concerns, listening, is this whole traffic thing, you know, the logistics of that. Are we going to have to get our kids up earlier? Do we have to, you know, get ready earlier? Like, what time are we expected to start school, to finish? Are we going to change that? Are we going to make it earlier? Are we going to make it later? I mean, I'm assuming that's all has to have an impact too, you know? Because again, you also said you haven't really figured out all that, all those details. And again, it's also very uncomforting. You know, you guys sent an email blast that, hey, we're going to redistrict, you know, September 2024. And I'm here like, whoa, hold on. That doesn't even give me much time to figure out, you know, what is going on. And then I come here and you guys don't even have that flushed out. And I think it's just, it's a little uncomfortable that you guys are implementing such a drastic change that requires so many details and logistics. And you guys really seem like you don't have that in place. And also, I agree with a lot of the parents here and everyone here. I'm not against it, I'm not, we're not saying, hey, maybe don't do this or don't do it at all. But maybe just take time to really assess and, 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 you know, really write out the details and logistics and everything that's going to go into this. Because maybe that will make us be on board.
So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. So yes, a lot of these points were mentioned in the, in the presentation. But as far as expansion, you know, we have been, I have been in talk with town council, the mayor. We're looking at numbers, we're looking at, you know, future outcomes. And we're, we are taking it step by step, day at a time. As I mentioned, we can be preemptive and build a structure when we don't have the capacity for, we don't have the students for at a time. Because again, it's taxpayers' money. So we want to make sure that we're putting it, we're maximizing use when that time comes, if that time comes. As far as traffic, as I mentioned, we're working with the traffic department and Department of Transportation. And also through the busing and through all that, we will explore different start times if the need arises. We're trying to make this transition as seamless as possible in those nuances that we could probably control. It's going to really depend on the Department of Transportation, our traffic department, and our busing patterns as well, if they're implemented. And as far as communication, it's kind of funny because, you know, we hear one person saying that we have so much information, it seems like this decision is already made. But then we also get critiqued because we might not have every, I dotted every T crossed. So it's kind of like, is it too early communication? Is it too late communication? It seems like, depending who you ask, the perspective is, it could go either way. As soon as we had some substance, as soon as we had some questions that we could answer, as soon as we had the skeleton, that was our first approach, is to communicate to the community what we have so far, and this is what we're looking to do. So it's, if it was too early and it's not flushed out enough, my apologies. And if it was too late, it seems like there was too much thought into it, and those decisions were already made. My apologies as well. But I strive to find that gray middle where we can accommodate to all families.
I'm sorry, we're going to have to, if you have any other questions, you can sign in. If anyone didn't speak and they want to speak, you can sign the sheet, but we have to keep going. The next speaker, Jamie Torajon.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Superintendent Alfonso. Thank you, board, for having this meeting. It's obviously very important to the town of Secaucus, as you can see. I moved here when I was in sixth grade, so I don't, I did not go through the entire elementary school, but I did have one year when I arrived, I went to Huber Street. I love this town. Secaucus is very, very unique, extremely unique. This town, you will not find a town like this really in the country. I'm dead, dead serious. We're right outside of New York City, okay? We're a very small town. Everybody knows everybody and everybody hears everything and rumors fly around. And that's how tight-knit this town is. And it's a small town. Let's not kid ourselves. It's a small town that is a little overcrowded, okay? It is a little overcrowded. We have the North End, which the citizens of the North End can only exit town on one road. There is one road that they can exit on. So many questions were answered here. The parents did a great job and, you know, concerned citizens. I'm concerned about the town as a whole because, you know, Meadowlands Parkway floods randomly. If there's a, if there's an accident on Route Three, town shuts down. As one parent stated earlier, there was an eerie, incredible line of traffic just to shuttle in people coming to the high school. So I, I want to, I want to understand, has a traffic, has, has a traffic study been done by the Secaucus Police Department's Traffic Bureau about how this can impact town as a whole? Because if we have normal NorthEnders going to their nine-to-five, college kids getting on the road, and then we have the entire other side of town coming to the North End and the North End going to the other side of town, it just seems like a logistical nightmare, frankly, you know, for our town. It really does. And, and I think that affects everybody personally, you know? Not only our kids, I mean, there were so many things. I mean, we're, we're literally just coming off of COVID, coming off this remote learning, coming off this virus, you know? Our kids need some continuity here. And you just want to shuffle them around again. I don't, I don't, I don't know if that's good for them. It seems a little experimental right now, you know? Mr. Landalfo stated that we have improved from 2017 from 600 to 400. That sounds great to me. So, you know, I like that old saying, you know, whatever isn't broken, don't try to fix. So, you know, my, but my question is, has a traffic study been conducted by the Secaucus Police Department's Traffic Bureau? It's obviously a concern of the town, you know, amongst other things. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So in response to your question, you know, we have been in communication with Department of Transportation and Traffic Department of Secaucus PD. We are getting together to start creating some of these reports and start developing them. And I want to stress to you that this is something that we are taking heavily and we're, we're not taking it for granted. That's why there is consistent collaboration amongst us. You know, when more information on that is provided, then we will absolutely make it aware to everyone. But we're trying our best to make sure that it is as seamless as possible. And we are not making a decision solely based on one party. We're involving all stakeholders and constituents. We're involving the town council, we're involving the mayor, we're involving the police department. So it's not just the Board of Education making a decision on its own.
Ardi Malautra.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time. Thanks for this meeting that we have been wanting to have. Majority of my questions have already been answered. And the only question that I have open is, since you said that the primary aim here and the objective of this redistricting is for the academic benefit of the kids of our town, what all institutions have you been in touch with for, as you mentioned during your presentation, that there will be some trainings and some enhancement programs for the teachers and the staff? So what are organizations you are consulting with? What is the plan on that? What is the timeline on that? Is, do you already have it, have the plan on paper? If yes, when do you plan to share it with the, with the parents? If not, what is the timeline on having it on paper and start implementing it on it? Because all I hear is you're confident that we can make it by September, but the main aim here, what I'm hearing is you plan to work on it. And correct me if I wrong, if you already have a plan, when can you share? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as far as who I've been in contact with, 95% of the school districts that I mentioned, I have been in contact with the superintendents. Even those that I didn't know, that weren't a part of my network, I have reached out to them to ask them what their input is and how the structure of the school is set up. It has been overwhelmingly positive input on their end, and they vouch for it 100%. As far as trainings for our staff in this transition, you know, I am in contact with them and we're going to see what training, specifically their staff, got that we could actually incorporate into our district. So once, again, once we have, the decision's been made and we decide which way we're going, then we'll develop those training programs and protocols in place for, and our teachers will probably happen over the summer, towards the later end of the year, over the summer, to make sure that we're ready for the incoming school year. Thank you.
Priscilla Lopez.
Hi. Hi, good evening. My name is Priscilla Lopez. I live in 17 Acorn Road, it's the North End. I'm part of the PTA board this first year. As you can tell, I'm a Huber Street parent. My only concern is, I have a child that she's in first grade right now. And she will be next year in second grade, that means she will be going to Huber, I mean, to Claridin. And to me, it doesn't make sense for her to go one year over there and then another year to go back to Huber Street where she's originally from. And we've been here eight years. I've never heard about this whole change and what you guys were going to do with the redistricting and everything. I'm just more concerned, she is a very outgoing person. Everyone right now knows my daughter, she's a very outgoing person. But she does suffer with anxiety. And when it comes to changes like that, big change like that, I feel it's going to affect her from going to one school, back to another, back to her home school that she was originally in. And I just feel like it won't help her at all. It's going to make it difficult for her to understand the change. Like, right now, we were deciding to leave Secaucus. And I chose not to because my daughter cried to me, saying she never wanted to leave Secaucus. So now we're in this process of buying a house here, and, which I love. I would, never thought I was going to stay in Secaucus at all. My husband is from Jersey City, he's a Jersey City kid. He refused to live here, but we did it for our child. And she loves it. And that was my big concern. She is going to go from one year to that, to Claridin, so that we can go back to Huber Street School. And to me, that's a lot of change for her. She went through COVID, she went through all this change, you know, and she's so comfortable now and her anxiety is getting better, but I know that is going to be a big trigger for her. And I know that she's not your child, she's my child. But that, to me, as her mom, will very affect me. And I just feel like all the other parents, because everyone here has children, third grade and up, but no one's so, like, in the middle. My child is right in the middle. She's going to be going back to fourth in one year. And I don't think that's right. I don't think it's a right time and, and this, how you guys are trying to do it so quickly. I think it needs to be more thought of when, when it comes to those kind of, at that age group. Because I feel like she's only six, she's not going to understand why is she going to this school and have to go back to this school in such a short amount of time. I feel like it should be more discussed when it comes to that age group, especially six, because that's the time that they are learning more, they need to understand and process more. And she, right now, will not process that the right way. Me knowing that, like, she's my child, I already know she's not going to, even though she will be there with her friends, but it's not the same, it's not going to be her same school. It might not even be the same teachers that she's so used to. And that's a big concern to me. So I just hope you guys think this through, not just for the town, but the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's all the speakers. Did anyone, I, I don't know that one name that I couldn't pronounce. Did anyone not get called? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. The end.
I plan on retiring here. Again, as I mentioned when I first got appointed, that is my goal. Again, it's not solely my decision, but as far as it comes to me, I've always dreamt of being here. You know, I grew up in the area and I would love to retire. So this is something I plan on seeing through as far as anything moving forward. I'm wholeheartedly invested into this district, this community, and the families. Thank you.
Board comments?
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
To the parent who just spoke and said, I know she's not your child, she's my child, I want you to know, I speak for myself and most of the board, all of the board here, we volunteer our job and your children are our children. That's why we give our time to try to make this district better. So please know that your child is our child and we are listening while we're up here.
Thank you, Christina.
Can I, can I also make a comment?
Go ahead.
Many of you probably know me that are sitting in the crowd, so I'm probably the only one on the board right now whose child will be affected by this redistricting. My daughter's in third grade. So I understand where you're all coming from. But I think we all just need to listen to how everything works because I think it will be better for our children in the long run, education-wise.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is a board member comment section. You had a chance to speak. Okay, that's not the process here. We gave you an opportunity to speak and we're making our comments now. Inappropriate. Anybody else?
I'll just say one thing, if I may.
Enrico.
I don't know if it was, I know that 10 years ago was one of the things that keeps getting brought up. I don't, it doesn't feel like 10 years ago, feels less. But I was, I was there at that meeting, but I was in the chair with you guys so many years ago. And, you know, we heard about it and we went to the meeting and I was just as frustrated as all of you. And at the time, you know, I have to say you guys are much more respectful than the people at that meeting. Thank you for that. But after hearing what the board said at the time, and again, I was in the audience at the time, and talking to the board members and the administrators, you know, things started making more sense to me of why they were doing it. You know, you asked a lot of times why and make it, make it make sense. And to me, at that time, what made sense was, you know, the, the ability to bring the resources together under one roof so that the grades can share the resources and, and then use more resources and be able to get more resources in for their children's education. I was, like many of you who just said, you know, you moved to the neighborhood, you moved to an area close to the school, as did I, you know, a couple of blocks away from Claridin. But I knew that after hearing what those board members said and trying to understand the reason why these things were happening, you know, it made more sense to me. And I knew that I was going to have to make sacrifices for my child's education at that time. And again, it didn't happen. You asked why it didn't happen, and because there were so many things that were not in the board's control. You know, most of that, those years, I was not on the board, and then I got on the board three years ago. So I understood that there was a lot of things that were happening that were distractions to the board, COVID being one of the many. So that's why it kind of took so long for this to take place. And, you know, we talk about the stability, you know, we talked about so many superintendents, and that is true. But now we're in a position as a board, and this is my feeling, I don't speak for the board. But now we're in a position as a board, and this is my feeling, I don't speak for the board, I do, I'm speaking for myself. We're at a position where I feel the board is a little bit more solid right now with, with our new superintendent, that's only been here for not even a year and that we can move forward with these things. And we are bringing them to your attention for a reason. You know, it's, it is January and I know it's nine months away, but it, this could all just started taking effect. Now that we have aggressive things, we're able to kind of present these things to you. And, and that's why this meeting is happening. It's not to hide anything. It's to get it out for you guys so that now we can start digesting it and move forward as a community. You know, it's been a long time in the making and, and now is the time for us to have the discussion. And I know it's, you know, like you guys, I was on there, and it's not an easy discussion to have. But it is a discussion that it's time to have. And, you know, we really are happy that so many of you came here and respectfully gave us your opinions, gave us your input. A lot of the questions you asked, we all have been asking each other. And I just want you to know that there is nothing that we're doing, again, I speak for myself, there's nothing that we're doing to like, hey, we're going to do this and screw the community. It's, it's not what's happening here. It's, it's keeping you guys involved, keeping everybody involved, and making sure everybody's on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.